Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Work Session, April 26, 2021.
21.
Go, Charles, let them go. We're on air?
Are we ready?
We're ready. I told you how to take them, go, Charles.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Work Session. Today is April 26, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. I will call the meeting to order. Haven't been able to do that in over a year. I will call the row at this time. Ms. Jasmine Bowles, District 1.
Present.
Mr. Mark Christmas, District 2.
Present.
Jessie Goree, present. Ms. Victoria Williams, District 4.
Present.
Dr. Dee Haney, District 5.
Present.
Ms. Mary Baker, District 6.
Present.
Ms. Sabrina Hill, District 7.
Present.
Dr. Alika Anderson, District 8.
Present.
Mr. Benjamin Straker, District 9.
Present.
Dr. Marsees Beasley, Superintendent of Schools.
Present.
Attorney Clem Doyle.
Present.
Dr. Chantara Rum Carter, Coordinator of Board Operations. Ms. Dawn Blau, Assistant Superintendent, I'm sorry, Assistant Administrative Assistant. And I'd like to welcome all of our Clayton County Public Schools Cabinet and staff that are in the audience. At this time, I would like for you to please stand with me and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members, at this time and to our audience, I would like for us to take a moment of silence because we have lost some staff members and also a student and one very beloved officer in the Clayton County community. I would like for us to take a moment to recognize Ms. Linda Hart, who was a bus driver for Clayton County Public Schools; Mr. Jason Coleman, who was an instructor in Mount Zion High School; Elijah Major, who was a senior at Mondays Mill High School; and for Officer Armando Mendoza, who was laid to rest today. Let's take a moment of silence, please, in their honor. Thank you. I'd also like to say that in the light of things that have been going on in the country, I would like to thank those jurors in Minnesota who rendered a verdict that speaks to the justice system in America. Now, at this time, I need to read the ethics statement. "In accordance with Board Policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved." Seeing none, we will move along to the adoption of the agenda. I will need a motion and the board members. Before we do that, since we're in a straight line and I don't see, I don't have my, we don't have the apparatus, just please say, "Madam Chair," and let me know who you are so I can acknowledge you. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Christmas has moved that we adopt the agenda. Can I get a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
That is?
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Hill. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. I can see your hand, so if you will raise your hand and be affirmative. I see everybody's hand. Dr. Anderson, are you? All right, it's a unanimous vote. The agenda is adopted. At this time, the next item on the agenda is that we need to go into executive session for litigation and a personnel matter. I need a motion to go into executive session. Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Anderson.
A second.
Can you tell me your name?
Victoria.
Oh, Ms. Williams, okay. That's been moved by Dr. Anderson and seconded by Ms. Williams. All right, please show your vote by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. At this time, we will move into executive session for those items and we will come back and have our board meeting as soon as we finish with executive session. Thank you all.
All right. We are back from executive session where we discussed personnel and litigation. And at this time, I need a motion in regards to litigation.
Ms. Williams.
I move that we accept the recommendation for modification.
All right.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the ruling of the tribunal with modification. If you'll raise your hand for the vote. All right, and it is unanimous. The next item.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's a request for you to state the tribunal number, please.
Tribunal number 20-21-02.
Okay, that is Employee Tribunal Hearing 2020-2021-02. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. I had completely overlooked that. Used to be on that Zoom. All right, at this time, we are at the point of the agenda where we'll do updates to the board. And I'm going to turn it over to, looks like Dr. Simpson, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair members of the board. Today, we have two updates for the board. We'll have our school improvement and leadership update, Dr. Simpson, and then the team will join them.
Good evening, members of the board. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, community at large. Just a few comments and updates this evening. The purpose of these updates is to provide the board of education as well as the community at large with an update of the following. One, COVID-19, the pandemic data, return to facilities feedback, GMAAS EOC testing, summer learning opportunities, celebrating Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month as well as the graduating seniors events and graduation ceremony. Those presenters will follow me, Ms. Charman Johnson, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Angela Collier, Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Ebony Lee, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Regina Wallace, K-12 Social Studies Coordinator. And it was Dr. Smith, but I don't think he's providing updates. So, Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Good afternoon, everyone. I will provide you with an update on our most current data as it relates to positive COVID-19 cases within Clayton County and in our school district. During the week of April 12 through 16, which was the first week that our students returned to face-to-face instruction, we had 224 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, three positive reported cases for our staff, and three positive cases reported for our students. During the week of April 19 through 23, we had 212 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, which was a decrease from the previous week. We had 12 positive cases reported for our staff and nine positive cases reported for our students. We will continue to implement our mitigating strategies at each school location. Now, I will provide the reported positive cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents in the past two reporting periods. For the two-week reporting period from March 28 through April 10, we had 137 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents. During the last two-week reporting period, which was April 11 through 24, we had 206 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents, which is an increase of 69 positive COVID cases. As always, you can find our most updated COVID-19 data on the district's dashboard. I will now provide the attendance data for the first two weeks that students returned to face-to-face instruction.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Where are those numbers? Where are you getting your numbers from?
When you say numbers, you mean the COVID cases?
Yeah.
We, Dr. Collier and her team, update those numbers every Monday or every two weeks for the reporting periods, and she gets those numbers from our epidemiologist, Dr. O.
Okay, well, our numbers, I don't see that. I see different numbers.
Okay, you mean different from the report that was given, or?
The report that was given.
I'll just forward the last report.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that.
Mr. Christmas, yes, those were updated today because we get the most updated data every Monday, usually Monday afternoon. So, we try to wait until we get that data to put it in the slide presentation for the board and the community. So, the data that you have now is the most updated data.
I believe that that was emailed to us today. It's in your email.
Yeah, it might be in my email, but it wasn't in my board packet.
No, it was emailed to us this morning. So, Dr. Rump Carter sent it to us. Yeah, it wasn't in the board packet because they said they were going to update it today. So, look for the email.
Thank you.
That Dr. Rump Carter sent to us. The PowerPoint presentation is in your email. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. For the week of April 12, so now we're going to talk about the attendance data for our students who returned to face-to-face instruction. So, for the week of April 12 through 16, which was the first week that our students returned to face-to-face instruction, we had 224 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, three positive reported cases for our staff, and three positive cases reported for our students. During the week of April 19 through 23, we had 212 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, which was a decrease from the previous week. We had 12 positive cases reported for our staff and nine positive cases reported for our students. We will continue to implement our mitigating strategies at each school location. Now, I will provide the reported positive cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents in the past two reporting periods. For the two-week reporting period from March 28 through April 10, we had 137 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents. During the last two-week reporting period, which was April 11 through 24, we had 206 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents, which is an increase of 69 positive COVID cases. As always, you can find our most updated COVID-19 data on the district's dashboard. I will now provide the attendance data for the first two weeks that students returned to face-to-face instruction.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Where are you getting your numbers from?
When you say numbers, you mean the COVID cases?
Yeah.
We, Dr. Collier and her team, update those numbers every Monday or every two weeks for the reporting periods, and she gets those numbers from our epidemiologist, Dr. O.
Okay, well, our numbers, I don't see that. I see different numbers.
Okay, you mean different from the report that was given, or?
The report that was given.
I'll just forward the last report.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that.
Mr. Christmas, yes, those were updated today because we get the most updated data every Monday, usually Monday afternoon. So, we try to wait until we get that data to put it in the slide presentation for the board and the community. So, the data that you have now is the most updated data.
I believe that that was emailed to us today. It's in your email.
Yeah, it might be in my email, but it wasn't in my board packet.
No, it was emailed to us this morning. So, Dr. Rump Carter sent it to us. Yeah, it wasn't in the board packet because they said they were going to update it today. So, look for the email.
Thank you.
That Dr. Rump Carter sent to us. The PowerPoint presentation is in your email. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. For the week of April 12, so now we're going to talk about the attendance data for our students who returned to face-to-face instruction. So, for the week of April 12 through 16, which was our first day for returning to face-to-face instruction, we had 24,219 students who are eligible to return to the buildings. After surveying our elementary parents and secondary students, we had 12,830 of the parents to confirm that they wanted their children to return to the school building. And out of the 12,830, approximately 8,732 students returned for A and B-day face-to-face instruction, which was about 36% of our elementary school students. For the week of April 19 through 22, which was last week, there was a slight decrease in the number of students who attended face-to-face as compared to the first week. But it was only a minor decrease, so we were still, on average, at about 36% of our elementary students. All right, next slide.
All right. We are back from executive session where we discussed personnel and litigation. And at this time, I need a motion in regards to litigation. Ms. Williams.
I move that we accept the recommendation for modification.
All right.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the ruling of the tribunal with modification. If you'll raise your hand for the vote. All right, and it is unanimous. The next item.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's a request for you to state the tribunal number, please.
Tribunal number 20 dash.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Bowles.
20 dash 21 oh two.
Okay, that is Employee Tribunal Hearing 2020 dash 2021 dash oh two.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. I had completely overlooked that. Used to be on that Zoom. All right, at this time, we are at the point of the agenda where we'll do updates to the board, and I will, I'm gonna turn it over to, looks like Dr. Simpson, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair members of the board. Today, we have two updates for the board. We'll have our school improvement and leadership update, Dr. Simpson, and then the team will join him.
Good evening, members of the board, Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, community at large. Just a few community, just a few comments and updates this, this evening. This purp, the purpose of these updates is to provide the board of education as well as the community at large with an update of the following. One, COVID-19, the pandemic data, return to facilities feedback, GMAZ EOC testing, summer learning opportunities, celebrating Asian American, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, as well as the graduating seniors events and graduation ceremony. Those presenters will follow me, Ms. Charman Johnson, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Angela Collier, Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Ebony Lee, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Regina Wallace, K-12 Social Studies Coordinator, and it was Dr. Smith, but I don't think he's providing updates, so Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Good afternoon, everyone. I will provide you with an update on our most current data as it relates to positive COVID-19 cases within Clayton County and in our school district. During the week of April the 12th through the 16th, which was the first week that our students returned to face-to-face instruction, we had 224 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, three positive reported cases for our staff, and three positive cases reported for our students. During the week of April the 19th through the 23rd, we had 212 positive COVID-19 cases reported for Clayton County, which was a decrease from the previous week. We had 12 positive cases reported for our staff and nine positive cases reported for our students. We will continue to implement our mitigating strategies at each school location. Now, I will provide the reported positive cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents in the past two reporting periods. For the two-week reporting period from March the 28th through April the 10th, we had 137 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents. During the last two-week reporting period, which was April the 11th through the 24th, we had 206 positive COVID-19 cases per 100,000 Clayton County residents, which is an increase of 69 positive COVID cases. As always, you can find our most updated COVID-19 data on the district's dashboard. I will now provide the attendance data for the first two weeks that students returned to face-to-face instruction.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Where are those, where are you getting your numbers from?
When you say numbers, you mean the COVID cases? We, Dr. Collier and her team update those numbers every Monday or every two weeks for the reporting periods, and she gets those numbers from our epidemiologist, Dr. O.
Okay, well, our numbers, I don't see that. I see different numbers.
Okay, you mean different from the report that was given, or?
The report that was given.
I'll just forward the last report.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, I believe that.
Mr. Christmas, yes, those were updated today because we get those, we get the most updated data every Monday, usually Monday afternoon. So, we try to wait until we get that data to put it in the slide presentation for the board and the community. So, the data that you have now is the most updated data.
I believe that that was emailed to us today. It's in your email.
Yeah, it might be in my email, but it wasn't in my board packet.
No, it, it, it was, it was emailed to us this morning. So, Dr. Rom Carter sent it to us. Yeah, it wasn't in the board packet because they said they were gonna update it today. So, look for the email.
Thank you.
That Dr. Rom Carter sent to us. This is the PowerPoint presentation. It's in your email. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. For the week of April the 12th, so now we're gonna talk about the attendance data for our students who returned to face-to-face instruction. So, for the week of April the 12th through the 15th, which was our first day for returning to face-to-face instruction, we had 24,219 students who are eligible to return to the buildings. After surveying our elementary parents and secondary students, we had 12,830 of the parents to confirm that they wanted their children to return to the school building. And out of the 12,830, approximately 8,732 students returned for A and B-day face-to-face instruction, which was about 36% of our elementary school students. For the week of April the 19th through the 22nd, which was last week, there was a slight decrease in the number of students who attended face-to-face as compared to the first week. But it was only a minor decrease, so we were still on average at about 36% of our elementary students. All right, next slide. So, our teachers are working to accommodate those students who are at home as well as the students who are learning from the classroom. To ensure that they provide access to instruction for all students, the teachers are teaching simultaneously, which means they are providing instruction to students at home and in the classroom at the same time. Our roomies are students who are learning in the classroom, and our zoomies are the students who are learning from home. During the pre-planning week, when teachers returned to the buildings, the teaching task force provided the teachers with training on how to provide effective instruction in a simultaneous learning environment. They reviewed rituals and routines and best practices for a simultaneous learning environment. In addition, all teachers and students were provided with headphones to ensure that everyone was hearing the same thing at the same time. School leaders and coaches will continue to provide support to our teachers and our students. Next, we have a few pictures. As we visited schools the first two weeks of face-to-face instruction, we took snapshots of our teachers and students in action. So, here we have students participating in specials. You can see they were utilizing their desk shields. And we had reminders on some of the desks regarding social distancing. And our students exited their cars with their masks on, and they rode their bus, the buses with their masks on. So, that's just an example. All right, now, we will hear from Dr. Lee.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this time, I will provide an update regarding the end-of-course testing as well as our summer learning opportunities. So, our Georgia Milestone testing for our end-of-course high school exams began last Monday, April 19th, and so far, so good. Everything is going smoothly. Our principals and our site testing coordinators, they done excellent job of implementing their testing game plans. So far, we haven't had any shutdowns due to COVID-19 testing. Our high school end-of-course testing, the students are following the procedures, the safety protocols. These students have assigned seats. There are temperature checks upon entering. They are spaced out accordingly, and they're wearing their mask throughout testing as well as staff members. The middle school end-of-grade test starts April 28th, this Wednesday, and then elementary will begin Monday, May 3rd. Are there any questions regarding GMAZ testing? I feel like I'm out of breath from wearing this mask. I'm sorry.
Can, can you give us any numbers? Do you have any numbers?
I do, yes. On the following slides, I'll have numbers, but I do wanna highlight just our transportation, our nutrition departments. They've done an excellent job of just making sure that our students, they have transportation to and from the sites as well as breakfast and meal services. So, on the following slide, and Ms. Rom Carter, you can go past, we have numbers regarding the end-of-course assessment participation as well as the number who registered and those enrolled. So, what you'll see is that there's a difference between the students who are enrolled in the course and the actual students who have registered. And we show the percentage difference, which ranges from 27% expected to participate to 74%. And we'll have an update for you Saturday at the May 1st Board Retreat. And as you all know, Superintendent Wood specified that those students who were continuing to learn virtually, that they should not come in if there was any trepidation regarding testing. And so, our parents, many of them, took the option to decline testing, as you can see. And so, the end-of-course exam, if they do not participate, the reduction in the weight is from 20% to now one one-hundredth of a percent. Are there any questions regarding the numbers that you see? Okay, so now for our summer learning opportunities. As you all are aware, Clayton County Public Schools continues to set the standard regarding summer learning. On the next slide, you will see the program dates as well as the number of days that they're being held. These summertime STEM camps, they will kick off first, and during those camps, our students are engaged in real-world learning from kindergarten up to their coding. They're engaged in gardening. They are doing graphic designs, creating comic books. They're creating smart cities that are environmental-friendly. So, just a lot of real, authentic learning opportunities to build their critical thinking and problem-solving skills, as well as their communication and collaboration. The kinder camps are wonderful. So, our Department of Early Learning, they are conducting those to build our students readiness. We're partnering with United Way, and they chose the locations that were in the areas that had the lowest child well-being score. And so, we're seeing a huge response. The registration kicked off today. Those teachers have been trained, and that's for our rising pre-K students and our rising kindergarten students. The next camp that you see are the Summer Enrichment Academies. Those are 15 days with a specific focus in reading, writing, and mathematics, and the purpose is to really drill those essential, not really drill, but use engaging ways to enhance their understanding of mathematics and literacy in order to give them a boost for the upcoming school year. The Advanced Learning for All camps, those are for students who are going into our accelerated coursework as well as advanced placement, and they're gonna get an early look into Unit 1. So, exposing them to the research, their reading and the writing, and all the other critical skills that are needed, and the tutorials are continuing. So, thank you, board members. I know you all were instrumental with getting the word out. We expanded the deadline from April 12th to April 20th, and from that timeframe, we had approximately 300 more parents to sign up. So, again, thank you to also our principals, our parent liaisons, our counselors, social workers, just everyone for encouraging our parents to take advantage of the summer learning opportunities. And on the next slide, you will see the numbers, which in comparison to what was in your board packet, you noticed these substantial increase. Still not, we're still not touching every student or even the number we would want to be there, but we understand it's been an unprecedented year, so our parents and students may have other plans for this summer. So, you see the student registration numbers as well as the teacher applicants, and we're continuing to sign up for kinder camps, and the Advanced Learning for All teachers are still being interviewed for placement. So, for those students who may not be a part of our summer learning opportunities, on the next slide, you have some schools that are offering, but this number may increase. These are schools that are conducting their own individual school program. But on the next slide, Dr. Rom Carter, it highlights our Clayton Reads efforts, and so, we want our parents to understand that our students should be still engaged in literacy activities and stimulating learning, even if they're not in our camps. So, Dr. Rom Carter, if you click on that link to the far right on the previous slide, you will see the one-stop-shop that we've shared with parents now, and community, and students. It includes our Clayton Reads efforts translated into Spanish and Vietnamese. So, all of our Clayton Reads summer lists are located there, from pre-K all the way up to 12th grade, high interest Reads. And the benefit of those selected texts is that our public library, they have access to, they're providing our students with access in the e-library, so they'll have online access. Also, you all know, we have expanded access to our little free libraries. That's noted, and we're also giving away reading packets, actual print texts, to our students kindergarten through eighth grade for all students. If you scroll down, Dr. Rom Carter, we include for parents of our littlest learners, early learning videos for our parents as well as applications that they can download onto their devices to use with their students. We also include a link where students can sign up for their public library card and have access to those eBooks, and then just an array of other summer reading opportunities. So, we're working with our schools to get the word out, to make sure parents know how to access, and our students know how to take advantage of these opportunities. And what we're finding is, in addition to sharing it with the parents, we just go straight to the students. We send it to their emails. They become accustomed to emailing back if they have questions, et cetera. So, some of the research that we shared with parents, just to really highlight the need to continue reading, is that if you take the average five-year-old who hasn't been read to, they know about 6,000 words. But if they're read to weekly, that number increases exponentially to over 60,000 words entering kindergarten. And if those students continue to read for at least 20 minutes a night, they will be exposed to 1.8 million more words. So, we all know the benefits of that and just their overall readiness. So, Dr. O, and the last part are just other community-based activities and recreations that parents can do with their children on their own. Okay? Are there any questions regarding the summer school opportunities or the Georgia Milestones assessments?
Yeah, where do we find all this at? Because we don't have it on my PowerPoint.
Actually, I was just getting ready to say something. I believe that is in the PowerPoint. The problem is that when you all send PowerPoints, and especially with us being in the pack this evening, you're sending those as a Google document, and we don't have access.
Yeah.
So, is it, in the future, when you all send these documents, is it possible that you could just send them in a PDF or Word or something so we can, because I have about four devices over here, and I keep going from one to the other, and I, I can't see any of it, and it's, that screen is so big back there, I can't even turn my neck to see it, so.
Understood, yes.
So, where can we find this at?
So, what I'll do is PDF it to send it directly to you, but it's at the top right corner of the most recent presentation that Dr. Rom Carter shared.
Ms., I can't hear you. Repeat what you just said. Oh, she did. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Baker.
I just wanna thank you and all your staff who've done this to, to come up with different creative ways. We know all children don't have the same interest, and this has been a crazy, crazy year. And like I, you know, tried to say, there's gonna be a lot out trying to do family reunions, but at least gives them an opportunity to pick and choose and find different things that work for them. So, I appreciate all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Dr. Lee, I also wanna thank you for the job that you've done, because, yes, you know, I've been one of those nosy board members that's been wanting us to try to increase those numbers. And I also wanna commend those principals who are actually, and Dr. Beasley and, and the team for allowing individual schools to have summer school at their site, because I think that the building principals sometimes have, they know the needs of their students better than, you know, it being like a cookie cutter recipe for the whole district. So, I really appreciate that, because, you know, back in the day when I worked for the district, we did do our own summer school at each of the schools, so that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to acknowledge two critical team members to our summer learning. Ms. Janetta Greenwood, as you all know, is our K-12 Science Coordinator, and she does an excellent job of just curating a wonderful experience for our students. And then Ms. Trina Reeves, who's our STEM Director. So, thank you to them.
Oh, thanks. And yes, we also wanna point out to our audience that we don't have all of our team in here tonight, because we are trying not, we are trying to adhere to the safety conditions of CDC requirements, so we mainly only have the people in tonight that need to present. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. So, at this time, I'm going to call to the stage our dynamic Social Studies Coordinator Regina Wallace, who will share the update for how we're celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Ms. Wallace.
Good evening. As Dr. Lee stated, I will be providing updates as to how the Department of Social Studies will be supporting our district with representing Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So, on the next slide, you will see all of the events that we have planned for our students and teachers. So, of course, with every Diversity Awareness Month, we provide teachers with a K-12 instructional package so that the lessons that they expose students to can be free of bias and things of that nature. For this particular K-12 instructional package, we really wanted to focus on students being able to understand that Asian heritage is more than Chinese or Japanese cultures. And so, we really focused on the diversity of Asia and those Pacific Islands that we will be celebrating during the month of May. As a part of that instructional package, students will be completing a document-based question, which as a reminder, is just when our students look at different primary sources to form an opinion that is supported by evidence. And for this particular document-based questions, we pulled it right from social media and from trending topics to address fake news and some opinions that we've been seeing in the news lately. And so, our topic is Stop Asian Hate. How do other ethnic groups support while continuing to confront their own issues of racism? So, once they have learned and gotten background around the culture of Asia and their different American experiences, we ask students to take informed action. So, basically, during this Taking Informed Action project, our student competition will ask students who bring awareness to the Stop Asian Hate movement in their dish, in their communities. And so, we'll be looking at different public service announcements created by our very own students. From there, our major focus of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is a project that we're calling Our Story. We have partnered with our IB candidate schools, Lee Street and Jonesboro Middle School, as well as Jenny Magiera. She's the Global Head of Education Impact for Google, and we're creating video vignettes that will allow our community to hear from people of this community that are of Asian Pacific heritage. They'll be discussing where they from, what is their story, how did they get here, what has their experience been like here. Now, we're also adding, of course, what, what are their thoughts on the whole Stop Asian Hate movement, where did it start, things of that nature. And so, in its totality, we feel like this particular focus of May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, we're really focusing on the diversity of Asia and making sure that our students are exposed to all cultures and becoming more aware and globally, just aware of their surroundings and their community. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was just gonna take a second to give a shout-out to Arts Clayton. They have a Korean exhibit right now. I don't know how, if you guys have set up so that the kids can see that virtually, but I do know it's, it's set up, and, and I hear it's absolutely gorgeous. I can't wait to see it.
As a part, I'm glad that you brought that up. As a part of our K-12 instructional packages, so for every month, we provide background information, community events, face-to-face, and virtually. So, we have added Arts Clayton to that particular instructional package so our kids can check out that phenomenal resource. Definitely. If there are no questions, then I will turn it back over to Ms. Johnson.
Our principals have planned a lot of exciting activities for our students to end the school year, and our high school principals have planned a variety of activities for our students during the month of April and May. We have included all, all of the events here for you to see, and some of those events include senior activities, the prom, the cap-and-gown pickup, awards a day, the seniors' final walk, yard signs placed in the yards of seniors, field days, and drive-through and parade activities. So, I wanna commend all of our principals for their hard work. We also are going to have activities for our students who are in the elementary and middle schools, so we will provide that information. We are collecting it now, that information, so we will provide that to you so that you all will know what days and times our schools will have those activities. And then finally, of course, we will have our graduations this year, and all of the graduations will be held either on May 26th or May 27th. All of our graduations will be held at Southern Crescent, Tara Stadium, or 12 Oaks Stadium. Each parent will receive six tickets to ensure that we are able to follow out our social distancing requirements. And the makeup days for graduation are the 28th of May as well as the 29th, if needed. Are there any questions?
Quick question, Madam Chair.
Ms. Bowles, go ahead.
Do you mean makeup days if a scholar misses their graduation, or makeup days like the rain date in case there's a cancellation?
Yes, makeup days if it rains, because they will be held outside. So, yes, those are makeup days where it rains. Yes, you're welcome.
Yes, we hope that our parents will have their children on the assigned date for graduation. I wanna thank Dr. Beasley and the school district for giving extra funds to each of the schools so that our, particularly our students that are moving on, our seniors, our eighth-grade students, and our fifth-grade students will have some type of a ceremony since they have not been in the school this year. So, as Ms. Johnson said, all of the seniors should get a yard sign so that everybody will know that they are proud graduates of Clayton County Public Schools, and there will be some great activities. I also wanted to thank some of the board members, and I may have missed some, but I know that several of us did go visit schools this, the past couple of weeks since we've been back in. And I just wanna commend the staff with the excellent job that you all have done to have the simultaneous teaching, the zoomies and the roomies, as they say. It's, it's been wonderful, and it's, I was laughing about how quiet it is when you go into the building because the students are engaged, and, you know, because I, I can. And, you know, because I can remember in past times when you would walk in the building and it might be a couple of classrooms that were off the chain. But everybody is engaged and they're enjoying their work. And I'm just very proud of the teachers and, you know, everybody's glad to be back. And I went into one school and I guess I wasn't able to social distance. I had to go medal in the pre-K room. As soon as I went in, you know, they ran and gave me a hug. But I have had my two shots, so I was good. And it was just good to see the children. And I also want to point out that all of us have had our, we've had our vaccines here. So we hope that you and the public will continue to get your vaccines so we can get back to normal life in America. All right.
Next, we'll have our safety and security update.
Safety and security, Ms. Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, colleagues, and the audience. I'd like to start off by saying it's wonderful seeing all of you all in person. I'm glad everyone's safe and I hope your families are safe. It's been a rough year, but we made it through it and hopefully there are better times ahead. I've submitted the executive summaries for safety and security. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have relative to that report.
Are there any questions? I know that some were sent this morning, but anything that someone might just want to ask so the public, it might be a question the public might want to know?
There were some questions and we, of course, did send those responses back.
Yes. So everything's good. I will say I'm just very proud of safety and security, especially, you know, doing our wellness checks and all those types of things. I know that actually Dr. Ron Carter actually encountered a couple of students that may or might, should not have been out at a certain time. And we involved our security team to help them out. So we're doing a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. And I just, I'd just like to say thank you to safety and security. He promptly answered all my questions and I'm just really appreciative of the work that you do and how you're keeping our students safe. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
That concludes our updates. That concludes our updates.
That includes the updates. We're now on the proposed agenda from the superintendent and the chair. And I'll turn it back over to you again, Dr. Beasley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. We'll start with our Business Services reports. Ms. Benton. And she'll just go through all four of the items you see listed on the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Beasley, members of the Board of Education, colleagues, and community. Tonight, we have a number of items on the agenda. And so we're going to go through those items. But we're going to have Ms. Tamika Billensley to walk through the finance report as well as the SPOS revenue report. And Ms. Deborah Brewer will talk to the team about the purchasing report. And I'll come back to discuss the FY 2022 tentative budget.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Beasley, and members of the board and community. I will briefly go over tonight's financial reports that have been presented to you. Have already been submitted. General Fund, current year-to-date revenue that we received in is $360 million and the expenditures are $278 million. Currently, for the month of March, the district's general fund balance is $180 million. Are there any questions regarding the financial report? The next report is the SPOS revenue report. For the month of March, we took in SPOS revenues of $3.9 million. That was roughly about $200,000 less than the previous month. Are there any questions the board may have in regards to the SPOS report?
Any questions, board members? Go ahead.
Okay. Well, that concludes the information in regards to the financial revenues. And Ms. Deborah Brewer will come up and speak to you regarding the purchasing report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Beasley, colleagues and community. I am here to present the purchasing report. It has three parts. Report A, our consumable purchases with a value of more than $10,000. Report B contains purchases with a value of $10,000 but less than $50,000 for non-consumable purchases. Those purchases have already been made. They are being shared for your information. Report C contains non-consumable items with a value of $50,000 or more, and we do need your approval for those items. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? I do have a question. I'm not sure if you can answer it or if there would be a Dr. Beasley question. In the event, I know that we talked about testing and I'm not sure. Since I couldn't see the numbers, I'm not sure what the numbers are for our elementary students. And I visited a couple of schools where I'm wondering if there might be more since today we weren't, we're no longer using the hyper schedule. Do we have enough of those death shields for all of our students? And do we have enough shields for our teacher shields? Are they on order or coming in or what's the status?
Dr. Smith, you want to come in and respond to that? I'll just tell you, based on my observation, I saw a whole lot of unused death shields.
Okay.
So, but Dr. Smith can give us some numbers.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Beasley, board members and members in the audience. Yes, we have ample amount of death shields that we've ordered for elementary students, K through 5th grade, enough for the staff members, enough for the guidance counseling, K through 12th grade, and also for testing, K through 12th grade.
Okay. I think that maybe you all need to send the email to some of these, our principals. I think they may be, I told them I felt like we had enough. So maybe they just either are afraid to ask or think that they're on back order or whatever. So please let them know that they can request them.
They are aware. We initially had an undercount and we sent out a second round to make certain that we fulfilled the number that they needed to take care of all the students. And I'm only aware of one school that is waiting on an additional amount. And the only reason they're waiting because their particular death shields, the little mechanism that holds them together was on back order.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't necessarily have a question about the purchase report. I just wanted to share an observation that I made. I still am curious about our sole source program. I noticed that there's about 26 total contracts on this one and about six of them are sole sourced, like a quarter are sole sourced or renewals. And so I just look forward to learning more about that. But one I was struck by was the Hope Mifflin contracts, which are all over, between the three of them, they total about $611,000. So over half a million. And that looked sole sourced, but it's curriculum and it's math curriculum. So I was just wondering if we are exclusive to Hope Mifflin, partial to Hope Mifflin. And again, this is probably not a purchasing question more than it is a curriculum question, but it's part of the sole source pieces and a large amount of money. So I was just wondering if, do we entertain other curriculums? Or are we looking for competitors? Or are we just committed to Hope Mifflin? And if so, curious about that.
So I can answer in reference to sole source. The department may want to answer in reference to curriculum. But for our sole source purchases, they have to be verified as a sole source, meaning there's no other source available for that with the, and also there's a justification. So just because a company is a sole source, say for example, they provide a unique reading program, they have to justify to us why they are choosing one particular reading program over another program. So they have to justify any sole source recommendation that is presented.
Well, it might also be, to answer Ms. Bowles' question, it might be, I was getting ready to say Dr. Lee because I was, the other reason I'm thinking it could be sole source is because it might be the book that we use for math, but I can't answer that question. So.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lee. And some of my curiosity is just about our commitments to SEL, DEI, anti-racism pedagogy, and just abolitionist teaching perspective in general. And so I'm curious about how or whether or not Hope Mifflin ascribes to any of those or if we are just going with them this year or what you've learned in your process.
So we have a relationship with Hope Mifflin and the way we've designed the sole source as the continuity of services. Because they've been providing the partnership with our Math 180, which is our math intervention program. And then the continuity of that with our core curriculum. So that not only do they support the text, but they also support the actual district curriculum that we implement. And so the way we're writing it up is just to continue that relationship because they've established support with our principals and our teachers previously. They know our data and also their work is mapped around the mathematical practices. So it's just really the continuity of services that they've provided over the last few years, for quite a while, actually.
Madam Chair.
Quick question for Dr. Lee. Dr. Lee, are we considering other providers?
Or will we eventually get to the point where we will consider other providers?
Well, usually our decision is based on not only perception data, but then the data that we're receiving from our students as well to determine if we need to break partnerships to enter into another strategic partnership.
Can you give me an example of when that has happened in the past?
Yes, so annually. So at the end of each year, even now, we have a survey that's gone out to our teachers. It closes this Friday to get their perception of the products and services. And based on that data, we use it to determine if we need to just strengthen the professional learning surrounding the product. Also, we look at our assessment data. For example, with Hope Mifflin, we will look at our ready particular data, the performance in each of the domains. We also receive principal feedback because our principals are engaged in those collaborative planning sessions with the Hope Mifflin in particular because that's what we're talking about them, those partnerships. So we receive their feedback on if they feel like the coaches who are entering the building are providing the support as designed.
So this is done annually?
Yes, so it is annually, yes. We're required to do it through the purchasing process too. We have to provide that data.
Do we have basals or do we have a math series by any particular company that we're using now?
Yes, so we do have McGraw-Hill, but we also use Curriculum Associates with the mathematics. So we have the iReady consumable texts, kindergarten through 8th grade, that also is in support of our Gates Grant that we have with the local university, Georgia State University, where they are in partnership of providing coaching around the Curriculum Associates iReady consumable texts. So it's an entire comprehensive agreement. And I think we're in the second year of that partnership.
Okay. I was just curious as to, I guess what I was thinking is if we were, if McGraw-Hill would be the, if that's the series that we're using, it would seem to me that would be the sole source.
So that's at the elementary level, but Hope Mifflin, essentially, they provide a comprehensive service for us. So it's not just about the text. It's more so around the math standards and the mathematical practices. And so many of those trainers, they're the leaders in the research around how we should be teaching math. They're also partnering with us. I heard Ms. Bowles mention, you know, just the whole movement. And so they support our AMWOC project with helping our teachers design real-world and rigorous activities for our students. So we don't shape the training solely around the textbook only.
Okay. But do we, I still understand what you mean about sole source, but do we ever do any RFPs or anything for other vendors that, to consider other vendors?
We can explore that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Great question, Madam Chair. I would love to see that, Dr. Lee.
Okay. And see, oh, just to expand into an RFP or Q?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Baker.
I have a question on C2.
C2?
Yes. Not sure if it's you or technology, but we have Chromebooks. How many Chromebooks do we get for that amount? Do you know offhand? Or do you, you know, you give it to me later if you have to?
You can provide the actual number that's been purchased. But remember, on the purchases of the amount, it doesn't, it's not just for the devices. It includes licenses and support.
Okay.
And they're purchased on an as-needed basis. So.
Okay.
That's the amount of the total contract per year.
Okay.
But it's not just for devices. And we can provide you the breakdown of what has been purchased over the last year.
Thank you very much.
And to add back to the earlier question, we do work with CIA and we're in the process of looking at doing RFPs for both these programs and their summer programs coming up next year so that we can advertise to a wider variety of vendors and hopefully, you know, receive more competition.
Right. And I actually know that we did do that this year because I remember that Dr. Beasley had actually emailed us the information. It's just a matter still of trying to get, you know, people involved because, you know, we keep saying we want to get minorities and those type small businesses to apply. But I know that we recently put something out for bid and it was, we had some of those companies to come, but they chose not to bid. So, you know, we really need to see what the issue is there.
And I should share what's also important. You know, I've been in this bidding RFP thing with curriculum and instruction for many years. You've got to be very careful because you want the continuity of your instruction. You don't want many gaps because I'm telling you, your teachers and your principals, y'all may not hear it, but eventually they will mutiny on you because they've got to go through 100 different people to address one content area. So you've got to be very careful about that. So we want to encourage competition and diversity of resources, but you've got to, you've got to manage that, right?
That's a sidebar. We don't have mics on, do we? We were having a little sidebar up here. Not, go ahead, Ms. Brewer.
Are there any more questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening again. So we're going to quickly move to the superintendent's tentative budget. I would like to just first publicly thank Dr. Beasley and of course, the members of the Budget Review Team for their support and collaboration during this process. I also just want to take a moment to thank the members of Business Services. Tamika Billensley, who's the Director of Finance, Lisa Domsel, who's not in the building now because we are socially distanced. She's the Coordinator of Position Control. Nefetiria Williams, she's our Budget Analyst. And then we have Mr. Charles Hobbs, who is the Finance Analyst, for their support. Now, these individual process, more than a half a billion dollars a year of information to make sure that the information is clear and concise. Of course, a lot of this information is done manually. And so I know that to a certain extent, we kind of make this information look easy, but it is a lot of information because obviously we are one of the major school districts in the state of Georgia. So as we move to the FY 2022 tentative consolidated budget, we can see that the proposed budget is $687 million.
is $687 million. The general operations budget makes up about 72% of it, which is $496 million. The special revenue is about 9%, which is $91 million. We have the Enterprise Fund, which is pretty consistent year over year, which is about $45 million, and it's made up of athletics and nutrition. Our capital outlet is about $45 million, which is about 8%. So as we move to the next slide, we'll see the general fund comparison slide. And as the board can see, that our revenue increased year over year, about $52 million. And so you can see that our current budget for revenue is about $444 million. Now, the projected or the proposed tentative budget is $496.5 million. And so everybody is aware of what was going on this time last year. And so we had planned, if we look at the FY 2021 column, we can see that we had planned to spend almost $40 million more than what we were projected to receive in revenue. And we all know that that's a result of the pandemic. And so you're going to see, as we get into some more information, so tonight, I'm providing a high-level overview. I know that we're planning a deep dive on May the 1st at the Board Retreat, and we will continue to have conversation through this week. And as we hear feedback from the Budget Review Committee, and also from staff on some of the stuff that we're going to talk about tonight, we'll make sure that we're sharing that information on Saturday. So as we go to the next slide, so you can see that there's an increase in revenue. And again, it's 10% for QBE, 14% for our local fund. QBE is Quality-Based Education. It's basically the funds that we receive from the state. So if we go to the next slide, we see that our expenditures, we see just a slight increase from FY, go back to, okay, thank you so much. We can see that our expenditures just increased almost $6 million from year over year. And so you can kind of see where those areas are. We're seeing a slight increase in the TRS rate, which is why we're up almost $4 million. And TRS is almost $3 million. And then the others are just some of the adjustments that we made in compensation for that little group of employees. So we can kind of see that it's about 1.3 million. And so our expenditures is just a restoration. So if the Board of Education can remember, last year, this time, we asked our staff, like, please, if you don't need the money, don't plan to spend it. So many of our departments on the operations side of the house took about a 10% to 15% decrease in their budget. And so here, we can kind of see just the restoring of some of that money, that $1.6 million increase. So if we go to the next slide, I just want to talk about some of the things that we've been talking about. The FY 2022 budget was developed with specific goals and priorities in mind. First, the superintendent wanted to make sure that we continued to focus on a healthy fund balance. Additionally, we wanted to make certain that all employees received a raise, which includes a step increase and a cost of living adjustment of 3%. Additionally, the superintendent desired to continue to focus on the overall compensation strategy. Of course, this board is aware that over the last two years, we've been really focusing on compensation. And we had some great plans last year this time, but of course, we had to move away from those plans to kind of see how the economics, the recession would play out in our society. And so we put that on pause. So this year, we're picking up the baton. And so we have a number of suggestions in here. The recommended additional increases in the FY 2022 budget totaled $33.4 million. This increase, we're planning to offset by some funding from the CARES Act. And so I just kind of want to talk about some of these increases. And so as I just mentioned, the CARES funding, you know, we have included, and this board has a very detailed budget worksheet, where you can kind of see the different groups that we're planning to transition to the CARES, you know, some of our utility expenses, transportation expenses, and of course, some facility things. A step increase for employees will cost the district about $5.7 million, a 3% cost of living allowance, about $10.2 million, and compensation incentives, $11.6 million. And then the next item is Compensation Adjustment and Retirement Contribution. So we go to the next slide, we're going to talk about some of these incentives. The first one is Professional Learning Incentive at $1,000. We want to make sure that all of our teachers have what they need to address the needs of our students. This has been a year like no other. So we know that our teachers are in need of some additional training, additional professional learning. So we dropped in $1,000 for an additional incentive there. The next one is the Career Ladder Incentive. The district is recommending to pay an additional $500 per endorsement for a number of endorsements. And so that's K-5 Math, K-5 Science, Reading, Gifted, ESOL, PBIS, and SEL endorsement. And so it's not, we're not maxing out, I'm sorry, it's not like you get paid for one endorsement. If you have all of those endorsements and you're a school-based employees, you get that additional incentive. In addition to that, we have a longevity incentive, and that's district-wide, starting at three years of service, $50 per year, as an additional incentive. In addition to that, we have the Key Milestone, or the Years of Service Incentive. So in addition to longevity, it's not, again, not one or the other. So if you are with the district on these key milestone years, you get additional, an additional incentive. Five years is $250, 10 years, $500, 20 years, $750, and 30 years, $1,000. So the next incentive is our retirement contribution. As everyone is aware, we have a group of employees, maybe about 1,300 employees of the district, where the district contributes about $10 a month in what we call PISers, which is the Public School Employee Retirement Plan. So for the year, we contribute $120. And so the superintendent is recommending that we start a retirement program, or at least contribute a little bit more to the retirement program for these groups of employees. And so we have that in there at $1,000. And we're hoping that, you know, if the money is available and it's budgeted for, that instead of $1,000 this year, that maybe we can move to a percentage. Because we know that other employees at the district that participate in TRS, the district contributes almost 20% of their base salary every month. And so then we have a group of employees, about 1,300, that we pay $10 a month for. So in addition to that, another incentive, an equity adjustment for, on the teacher's scale. So we know that on the teacher's scales, that some employees do not receive, they may receive a step increase, but they receive no dollar increase, because that's how the state's scale is organized and structured. So we're dropping in an incentive to make sure that every employee receive a dollar increase every, not $1, but $500. That's what's included. So if the Board of Education look at the scales that we provided to you, you can see that equity incentive on each step. So in addition to, so the last incentive, or the last adjustment that we're going to talk about tonight, is just the equalization of the hourly pay rate. And so if the Board of Education can remember, we had a conversation probably about a year ago, where we recognized that some employees that work less than 225 days, their hourly rate is very different from the hourly rate of a 225-day employee. So the superintendent is recommending that we equalize that to make sure that all employees are paid the same hourly rate. And so the only difference is just the number of days that the employee worked. And so we have the calculation of what all of these things would cost. We believe that this tentative budget meets the overall objectives and goals of the district. The superintendent is ensuring that the district continues to be financially healthy, as well as ensuring that our compensation package is competitive. Overall, all employees will receive a minimum increase of 5% to 6%. Now, when we look at some of our employees, we can see, and I'm providing an example for the Board of Education, we can see that the average increase is anywhere from 9% to 12%. So I'm looking forward to spending more time with the Board of Education on Saturday, May the 1st, so we can do a deep dive. I can take any questions at this time. I see Ms. Williams' hand.
I got one, too.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I have two questions. Would these incentives be, like, in a separate check towards the end of the year, or would it be spread out through the year on their pay?
So we're not planning to spread out these incentives through their pay over the year. They will be in a one check. And so since we have, I think we have about seven incentives, we will strategically, for example, pay them out. Some may be in September, some will be in October, some may be in December, but it won't be spread out like their salaries.
Will they be taxed, like their bonus check was taxed?
So, yes. So, good question. Of course, the incentives will be taxed. They will be taxed at an employee individual rates, because these are incentives and they're not bonus. And so bonus payments are taxed at the IRS supplemental income rate. This would be taxed at an individual, individual federal and state income tax rate.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Benton, I want to ask you also, for this year, and I know I'm, I know I'm probably continuing to beat the dead horse, but for this year, could we do another bonus for our employees without taking out all that money that we did? That was just too much money taken out. And why can't the district take, pay the taxes, and we give them one more bonus to kind of make up for what they lost?
So I think if we're going to do bonus, then we are obviously required to follow the rules of the IRS. And so I guess that's the first comment. The second thing, the superintendent and I have had a conversation about a number of options, but we, I don't think we would use the term bonus.
Okay. Because as far as, I don't know the rules of the IRS, but what I'm saying is I've seen other districts, and they've gotten the $1,000 bonus. And they paid the taxes on that money. So there was other ways that that money could have been handled. And a lot of our people who were bus drivers, cafeteria workers, $600 and $700 were taking out their checks. Now, I know you guys have met, and that's great, but that still does not, you know, that still does not help those employees who took those big hits like that. And I just think that we could have done it better. And I think when you all start doing, you know, looking at things like that, we need to look at maybe, again, paying those taxes and doing something different. And if it's not called a bonus, just make it, you know, make it, make it what it needs to be made, so these people won't be losing their money.
So I just want to, I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
We're talking about the same thing.
Okay.
Money that you gave them, the $2,000, that some of those people took $600 and $700, money was taken out of their checks in those amounts. I contend that that was too much money. The district should have took, should have paid those taxes, where they could have gotten their money. The IRS is not an excuse. We understand that they have to be paid, but we could have paid them. We could have taken that hit. So do you understand what I'm coming for?
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
I understand.
But let's be, hold on one second. Let me be very clear.
Yeah.
If, not only would you be paying for the base rate, then we would have also incurred the additional expense of paying the IRS. So that's a different conversation, that we've got to look to see if we can sustain that, if we can do that. And again, that impacts even what we're proposing going forward, because that impacts the amount of money you have available in your fund balance at some point. I do understand that some districts paid the taxes, but I don't think there were many who doubled the bonus like we did.
I don't know of one district. We are the only district that I'm aware that gave $2,000.
Now, and I want to say that we were, we were directed very specifically that we had to pay taxes, and many of the districts did, like Clayton County did, because the way the governor presented his
Correct.
Presented this extra fund within the guidelines in order for the state to get reimbursed, if you will. We had to follow, and they were, they put it in writing.
They were very
Very clear instructions.
Excuse me, you all. Can we talk about this on Saturday?
Yeah, we will.
And let's talk about what's on the agenda, please.
Okay, I'll stay.
Okay. So we, I do understand your point. I wish that we had a slide that, so that, because I had some people that called, and I guess I wanted to just, what you gave to us, I'm not sure if it was one of the slides for the public to see, Ms. Benton.
Oh, the example?
I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to discuss the example. For example, you gave us an example of someone that's on the T5 scale, and they, at five years, so right now, their salary would be $52,647. If we gave them a step increase, that would be $1,223. The cost of living would add an additional $1,616, which would mean their salary would then be $55,486. So then if you add in the $1,000 for the Professional Learning Incentive, and then another 500 for, what is this, Career Ladder Incentive, another 500 for Gifted Endorsement, another 500 for ESOL, longevity incentive would give them another $250, Years of Service would give them another $250. And by the time we did the equity adjustment, their salary would be $58,486. So that would be an 11% increase. And so we, so what I just wanted to, I know I've had some teachers that called, and I'm not sure yet on eBoard, you also had those salary scales? Oh, wait a minute.
Yes, ma'am. The salary scales are on eBoard.
Right. So, yeah, so if we could make sure that our teachers see those salary scales and these examples, because we want to get them excited about the amount of money that we, that they could look forward to. And then, like I said, on Saturday, we can just, you know, discuss, because I do understand Dr. Anderson's concerns and whatever. Maybe you all can better inform us about those things. Because I also would like for us to look at possibly moving some of our maintenance department. I would, I would like to look at trying to move them back to TRS, because they had been under the TRS system until we had one superintendent come in and change them. And when I look at how, if they worked 30 years, for them to come out and only be making, get a $1,000 a month pension, that's not very good. So I do like the idea, if we can look at that, or even look at adding the retirement contribution to their current retirement plan. That would be very helpful for them. And also, I think we also might look at, and maybe increasing our salaries of our SROs, because currently, we have students that are leaving Monday's Mill and Drew that are going into the firefighters, those positions. And they're making, they're coming out of high school making $40,000 or more. And then we have SROs that are still in the 30s. So that's another area that I would like for us to look at.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bowles.
I was just going to say something similar. Ms. Benton, I can't wait till Saturday, and I'm excited to hear the deep dive. One of the things that I think I'm probably just not, knowing how to use this properly, and thank you for getting these delivered to our homes, the printed-out budget, I'm unable to still trace departmental budgets. And I don't know if that's intentional or accidental, but one of the ones I'm looking for is Safety and Security, including but not limited to the reason Madam Chair just brought up, but additionally, all the great things they've been doing all year, how much we've invested in this or that, based on our efforts in the community. And so Safety and Security is one I see nowhere, but I just wonder if there's any other department I don't have access to, but am unaware.
So all of the, so you don't, you're not going to be able to see in your book, Ms. Bowles? in your book, Ms. Bowes, the detailed department? No, in no department other than, you know, it's kind of high level. We do have some supplemental information, which is we have by department and by site.
Yes, I may be misremembering, but I feel like we went through this last year, and we know that we want the department-level data. And so, again, maybe we can include that Saturday. I know it's not in this book.
It's not in this book. I can actually, I can send it tonight or tomorrow morning for you. We have that information. We tend to, we did not post that detailed information with the final budget last year, but we did send it to the Board of Education. But we do have that information, and I can just send it on.
Thank you, Ms. Benton.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
Does anyone else have any other questions regarding our budget? One other thing that you, that probably will need to be added, but I started, I just won't say it right now because I don't want to jinx it. So we'll just wait until Saturday. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benton. Now we'll have Construction Splos, Ronnie Joseph.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley. The Construction Department has two items for your consideration, the first being the bid results for Eddie White Middle School. On April 15th, we received three bids. The recommendations were SRS Incorporated out of Griffin, Georgia, be award of the project. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Baker.
Just for the public, can you give us an overview of what's going to be changing at Eddie White? It was on our report, but I don't know that it's on the...
Thank you. So this is in preparation of the transients that will occur on the south end of the county. In August of 2022, Michelle Obama Elementary School will be ready for the new students. So the elementary schools, the elementary students located at Eddie White Middle will relocate to the new facility. And so, and then Lovejoy Middle School students will relocate to the existing Eddie White Academy to join the existing middle schools at Eddie White Academy. So this project is associated with this work. There are elementary school components at the facility. So we will be adding lockers, adding additional labs, raising restroom fixtures, et cetera.
Mr. Joseph, will, one of the concerns is now, once this, we approve this, will we, will they actually be able to renovate the school fast enough so that when school opens, that everybody will be able to be in the buildings, our prospective buildings?
Yes, ma'am. So the overall schedule is to procure the materials in the month of May and construct June, July. I'm not too concerned with the overall schedule. It's $1.6 million. We've done a whole lot more within the two months, summer period.
Okay. Any other questions?
The next item is the monthly Splos construction update. For the month of April, three payments were made totaling $7.4 million. There were no change orders executed for this period. Are there any questions regarding ongoing projects?
I will ask, now that I finally have gotten out and driven past Jonesville, when will Jonesville be finished?
So we have proceeded with the demolition of the vocational building, as the community can see. So we are down to the final phase. To answer your question, will be done by start of school, August of 2022, 2021, I apologize. So we are waiting for the testing period to be complete. And once testing's done, we will wrap this project up.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Beasley?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Ronnie. Next, we'll have a Human Resources Report, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley and community members. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel actions for the period of March 18th through April 14th, 2021. Beginning with this report, the numbers that will be shared reflect staffing for the upcoming school year. We began posting teacher positions for next school year on March 18th of this year. As of this report, we're about 92% staffed for next school year. For the same reporting period last year, we're about 89% staffed. To fill the vacancies, we've had a number of virtual job fairs. One is latest this past Saturday to allow principals a candidate pool to interview and recommend candidates from. We have a couple more job fairs left throughout the summer. Additionally, we've had two contract distributions for this year, February 19th and April 16th. We have one additional distribution on May 7th. As of today, as of today, rather, 96% of our employees have returned their contracts indicating they're coming back. But with that number, as we see every year, with the state allowing employees to resign from their contracts until June 15th, we do anticipate that number to fluctuate as employees explore other career opportunities. But we are hopeful that we will be as close to 100% as possible. Finally, I'd like to share, well, almost finally, share information about the Grow With Us Initiative. We had one informational session on March 31st, and another one will be held on May 5th, whereby we're working with our mostly classified employees in support for them to become a DES-certified teacher for the upcoming school year. So we had about 130-plus employees on the first session, and we're looking forward to the second session. So as of today, I think, I don't know the number, but last checked, maybe a 10 or so had been qualified for the program. So that's 10 more of our employees who have become teachers with us. And then lastly, the Retention Task Force met last week, I think. And the purpose of that meeting was to develop the end-of-year perception survey that will be administered to all CCPS employees from May 3rd through May 28th. And the results of that survey will be shared with schools and departments with the expectation that they will develop a local school and/or department retention plan so that we can begin to retain more of our quality employees, thus having to hire less, fewer employees each year. That concludes the Personnel Changes Report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Really quickly, just, I think you're doing great work on the retention piece, and thanks for the update on the task force. I also love hearing about the survey, May 3rd through 28th, and you said it'd be shared with local schools. Do you mind sharing that with the Board as well, when the data is available?
Sure, yes, we'll give an update. If you may recall, a few months ago, we provided the results for the mid-year survey. And once the results are in for the end of the year, survey will do the same.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you. I would like, have one request, though. Is it possible, since I did have a, I had someone to send me an email the other day, it might have also gone to the other board members about someone that, someone was interested in them becoming an assistant principal, and they think that board members that we have, we're involved with the process. I was trying to explain to the person that we don't, we're not involved with the interview process. Could you all send us the procedure for how you go about selecting the whole procedure as far as, once you post the position, and then you do the screening and all that? So I can just forward that the next time?
Sure.
Because they seem to think we can just put, give people an interview. And I was trying to explain that we don't do anything but vote on the recommendation that comes from the superintendent.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes our reports.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, our Board Matters. That's the Policy Series I. This is the second read. And I did send in a couple of questions today other than the, I'm still not quite sure if I have clarification on why we, let's see, what was the statement? Why we added "who are learning face-to-face"? I'm still trying to see why that would be. That's on page 12 of Policy IHA.
Damaris and Dr. Lee may want to respond.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley and the audience. Yes, one, during the policy review process, the members of CIA wanted to insert that language, given that the district will now be offering the face-to-face as well as the remote option for our parents. So the purpose of that was to provide not just the distinction, but to really clarify that that information is relative to all students to ensure that they're clear that those same boundaries and grading systems will be used for all of our students, whether or not they're virtual or face-to-face.
Right, so I'm, so I'm just trying to understand why it, we don't just say "for our students" instead of, because what it looked like to me is that it only was applicable to face-to-face students. That's the understanding that I get, so...
The prior language, that the prior language was only applicable to face-to-face, and now we've added in the remote?
Well, what I saw added in, I thought I saw added in was "who are learning face-to-face."
Actually, it says "who are learning face-to-face and remote." So it says both. It actually has the distinction for both.
All right, I'm gonna have to go back. To me, it just seems that if, that it would be applicable to both. But I'll just...
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
And I think it was just really just, actually, to add emphasis.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And so if I can read it, it just says, it says, "who are learning face-to-face or remotely are mastering the curriculum standards." So it's just really adding emphasis that it's for all students. So parents are aware that we are utilizing the same grading systems and structures for those students, regardless of whether or not they're in the virtual setting or if they're in that face-to-face setting.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to, the only reason why, because some parents seem to believe that it's going to be different because they're learning, but it's the same structure. We just want to put that in, especially given this the very first year that the district will be utilizing that hybrid model for the entire school year.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think "and" could help instead of "or"? Because I see the sentence too, and it does say both words, but "face-to-face" or "remotely," maybe "and" will show that it's both?
I think we can do that. That's a great, I think that's a great, would that work for you, Ms. Corby? Would that provide clarity for you and maybe read a little better for you?
Actually, this, I really can't understand what you're saying. Now that, you know, when we first had us configured, I know we were trying to have everybody facing, but I actually think it would have been better if we had left it. Because, you know, when we're in the boardroom, you're kind of the way... Can you repeat what you said?
Yes, ma'am. You talked about page 12 and how it looks like it's just addressing students who are learning face-to-face, and it says "or remotely." But my suggestion is I wonder if we take out the word "or" and replace it with "and," and that shows that it's for in-person and virtual learners have the same grading system. Okay.
We will make that change.
Okay, the other question I think I had, and I'm not really sure. I was trying to understand the, give me a little bit more explanation about why the grade, the classwork at the high school is less than the test? Because at the other levels, I think you all gave me explanation, but can you explain to me why classwork wouldn't be either the same or about equal? I guess maybe the explanation was about maybe an end-of-course test or something, but what's the explanation for that?
I'm going to quickly take a stab, but then I'm going to pivot on to Dr. Lee. I believe that that was actually altered and changed based upon the changes that occurred with the state board, with the state superintendent this year. But I want to actually have Ebony come up. I want to make sure you get the correct answer relative to grading, because I know we discussed it at our policy review meeting, but I want to allow her to provide the answer with our subject meta expertise.
Thank you so much, Damaris. So, Madam Chair, what I was trying to explain in the email is that high school courses, they have a final exam. That's an additional category of 20%. This year's less than that for ELC. So in order to redistribute for a totality of 100%, we pulled from the classwork category. So that's why the classwork is less than the test percent. So tests at elementary, middle, and high would be 30%, and then the classwork is less in order to provide the additional weight for the final exam.
Okay, but now you're saying that's based on the testing?
Yes.
Okay, but not every class is tested, is it?
So at the high school, there's a final exam for all courses. So the final exam could be the ELC. If it's a non-end-of-course class, then it's their regular course exam. And so it is 20% of the weight of the total 100%.
All right.
But we just pulled from the classwork percent in order to redistribute it to the final exam weight. And essentially, the final exam is assessing what they're learning in class on the Georgia Standards of Excellence or whatever the core standards are.
Well, I get that, but I'm not sure I agree with that. I think, you know, especially, we know how tests, our students don't always test as well as other students. So I'm not really sure I agree with that, but I do understand.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
I think that's all the questions. Did anyone else have any concerns? Okay.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Okay. Well, I believe that's it. We have covered everything on the agenda except we need to go to the next item, which would be the approval of the proposed agenda for May 3rd.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Mr. Christmas, I haven't even looked at it good yet. Can I, can I look at it?
I second.
I know everybody.
We've already seconded.
Since we're not on these Splos meetings, we just came walking to the other room. Now we got to actually get in our cars and drive back home. I want everybody to look at it and make sure everything's on there. Okay? And I want everybody to make certain that, you know, we do have a retreat on Saturday, and it's a virtual retreat, and that we will be looking at the tentative adoption of the budget. So make sure you look at your budget books. All right, so I have a motion, I believe, from Mr. Christmas, who made the motion, and I believe Dr. Anderson seconded the motion to accept the proposed agenda. And can I, can you raise your hands for the vote, please? Looks like everyone is in agreement, so it's a unanimous vote. And I believe that we have covered everything and that this meeting is adjourned.
What time is our treat for this?
8:30.
Huh?
8:30.